Okay, Goff County Commissioner is now in session.
I'm in prayer, would you please, uh, Lord, thank you for this wonderful day. Lord, be with us as we go about conducting the business of great people. But look over our country, we always look over our law enforcement, lives on the line daily. That's our military, not only here in the United States, but all our forces that are armed, saw veterans that put their lives on the line where we have freedom that we have today. Lord again, be with us as we conduct this meeting today. Ask us all in the same prayers. Uh, prayers, ladies.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to live the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and
Good morning to all. Send a good welcome to you attending the March 24th regular meeting of the Goff County Board of County Commissioners. Anyone in the audience has any business over the board that will be up, uh, at, or in the, uh, meeting for public discussion at that time, if you'll just be recognized, come up and you will be given time. All right, at this time, we're going to go into the audience, uh, anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns with the consent agenda or the information packet? Anyone in the audience? No one in the audience, then we will go over to our staff. Does any staff members have any questions or concerns with the consent agenda or the information packet? Having none, now we will go to the board. Does any board member have any, uh, questions or concerns with the consent or the information packet? Having none, I need a motion to accept.
Someone's chairman.
We have a motion by Commissioner Quinn. We have a second by Commissioner Macklemore. Any opposition? Anyone in the audience? Not, motion pass four and oh. All right, we're going to take this time, we're going to change up the, uh, agenda just a little bit, because, uh, first, I'm going to call up from the, uh, Weewaw Medical Center, Ms. Katrina Saunders, and she has a guest with her and she wants to, uh, give a report to the board and to the community. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, I'm Katrina Saunders.
Well, you might give her her name and everything you've got over there, she may already have it.
I think Katrina Saunders. Destiny Barnes. Okay, um.
Well, you might now a little bit. There you go, okay.
Did you just call me short?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm Katrina Saunders, the center manager for Weewaw Hitchcock Medical Center, we're one of the federally qualified healthcare centers for Goff County. Um, I come on a quarterly basis just to update you with what's happening at the center, and today I have very good news. I have with me our new physician's assistant, this is Destiny Barnes, and I'm going to let Destiny, uh, talk and tell you about herself a little bit, but I will tell you that she is a North Florida native and we're very happy to have her with us. Destiny.
After she was saying, I am Destiny Barnes, I am originally from Marietta, Florida, born and raised there and graduated. I did my undergraduate education at University of Florida, and then I went on down to Fort Myers and did my graduate education at Nova Southeastern University, the satellite campus, the main campus is in Fort Lauderdale. And I was just too far from home and I wanted to move back a little closer, so here I am. Right now, we're doing colorectal cancer screenings, and that's basically, it's given once a year, it's a kit that we give all our patients, and the screening is for, it's a different tool, so to kind of bypass the colonoscopy, if that's something that the patients don't want to do, because sometimes it's hard to get the patients to do that. We also have tobacco cessation cap classes at the Tuesday, first Tuesday on every month, and what that is, is all our patients can come in, it's after, it's in the afternoon, and it's a free class, and it's just different resources we provide them with to help them stop smoking if they are willing to.
The colorectal cancer, uh, screening, we received a grant, North Florida, which is our parent corporation, we received a grant from Walgreens and United Cancer, or American Cancer Society, and the basis of the grant is to make sure that our uninsured patients have access to this very important screening, so we're, we're very pleased with that. Our uninsured patients who have this screening done, the, the kit is, uh, given to them at no cost to them, so, uh, that's very wonderful with them, for them, and it, absolutely, if something were to show up in the screening, then our nurses and our doctors, um, work with them, you know, to find the, the next step that they need. The tobacco cessation classes are, uh, community service, um, so anyone in the community who has that thought that they would like to stop smoking, they should definitely call Weewaw Hitchcock Medical Center, and we'll get them set up with the next class. Those are the first Tuesday of every month. Thank you, have a good day.
As always, it's not just restricted to Goff County.
Exactly, absolutely. Mexico, be civil area.
Oh, sure, Commissioner.
Can I ask one question? How much was the grant?
The grant, um, I believe was, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars, and the, the, the focus is those uninsured funds for uninsured patients to get these, uh, screenings done, and the hundred thousand dollars is spread through our 12 counties that North Florida serves.
A little too far.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
But it's out there. Nice to meet you again, that's actually good to, uh, welcome to Goff County, and you should be working up in the Weewaw Hitchcock area, so if you need, uh, first-class service, see this young lady.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Katrina, y'all have a good. There you are. Okay, all right, uh, next, we have with us this morning Representative, United States Representative Gwen Graham, Alex Quintana, he wants to come up and share some good news for the good people in Porttango and Goff County. Alex, welcome.
Good morning. Alex from Panama City, Florida, uh, thank y'all for having me here again this morning, I just wanted to remind y'all that we have the first of Congresswoman Graham's monthly office hours, this, uh, this morning from 11 to 1:00 over at the city hall and the fire station.
Here in Porttango.
Yes, sir, that's correct, and this will be a monthly occurrence, uh, the, was it the third Tuesday that we're at? Uh, before this meeting every month, uh, or after this meeting rather, we'll be having the office hours over there at the city hall and fire station, and we'd love to see y'all come out and bring any constituent issues that the Congresswoman's office can help with. Thank y'all.
Thank you, hey, come see us anytime for the day. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going into county staff business, Mr. Butler, offering you.
Mr. Chairman, my, my first item is to do with rotating clay, gonna be a little bit lengthy, a little bit, a little different way of doing business if we could do this. Uh, Mr. Chairman, you and I had a good meeting a few weeks ago, a few Fridays ago with, with the, um, Desiree, the new, like, the owners in Goff County, the Calhoun's and the farmers, you know, and we're talking about acquiring some clay and field dirt from them, and they have, they have some clay pits closer, closer to the south end of the county, rather than the northern county and Calhoun County, that we've been getting clay from, and they have asked that we, this is a little different what we normally do, and I need to go through the whole thing in order to, to make any sense of it.
Right.
They have asked us to give them a proposal and a plan of how we, we intend to acquire clay and topsoil from them, how we're going to quantify the amount without someone standing there counting truckloads. You know, and it will probably result in probably a survey of the land and a determination of how many cubic yards we need and, and know, we know how deep we gotta dig, and after it's done, it will be, be qualified, and then we'll pay them for the number of cubic yards. And what I'd like to be able to do is, is offer them a dollar a cubic yard for the material. This is a proposal to them. Typically, what we do, we ask everyone, the whole world for proposals to us, and we're, we're paying a little more on that now for clay in Calhoun County and, and other places, but we can offer them, they want to help us, and if we can get it for a dollar yard, uh, we got three big projects coming up, one Obeyseed Road, one Jared Owens Road, one landfill. Landfill possibly could be, could be eighty to a hundred thousand cubic yards of material. Could be about sixty-five thousand cubic yards of material on, on, uh, Jared Daniels Road, and probably about forty-five thousand on Obeyseed Road. What it will do, what we could do, we could let this, our contractors, as they contract these projects, um, recognize a, a good price per cubic yard. We'll, we'll get a better unit price, and we'll get more paving done on the ground than we'd be if they hadn't hauled it twenty, thirty miles from somewhere, because these two, two of these clay pits are right, one right next to Obeyseed Road, one right next to Jared Daniels Road, and also, um, both are a lot closer than us going to Calhoun and hauling slave in Calhoun County. So if the board would let me make a proposal to them, now we, we have a limit, we have a threshold that we must honor, that we can't just go out and buy and, above that threshold amount of money, but at the same time, allow us to go ahead and, and request proposals from anyone in the world that's willing to sell us clay, and let that be coming in, that probably take two or three weeks for those numbers to come in, and if for some reason those numbers were to come in lower than our proposal to Desiree, then we'll, we'll go that way, and we, we have to figure the location, make sure we, we're not hauling too many miles, but we, we need to get some projects going. We got a landfill project that's getting very close, we've already awarded a bid on one project, on Obeyseed Road, uh, the contractors are lining up to put, put a bid on Jared Daniels Road, and our grant money will prob, it will not pay the entire Jared Daniels Road. There's a possibility that if we can get the numbers right on the clay, and then not have to haul it out Bay County or Calhoun County, we maybe will get Jared Daniels Road done, if we get the right number on clay. This is an offer from Desiree to be, be, uh, a good neighbor to Goff County, to work with Goff County, and they, they told the chairman out they wanted to work with Goff County any way they could, it's not like they want to go out and sell clay, but they're willing to sell clay to us if, if we need clay and it'll do us some good. So if the board would let me, it's a little different what we normally do, if the board would let me make a proposal to them, pretty much in the range that we will, and, and give them a plan, tell them how we'll quantify how much, how many cubic yards of material we get, you know, and then offer them a dollar a cubic yard, and, and at the same time, simultaneously, we'll go out and request proposals from anyone willing to provide the same material to us, and then when those numbers come in, we can match them up, we, we might get a few weeks' note on it, and if they were, Desiree will go ahead and act soon, we could probably go ahead and be acquiring some of that clay early on, but, and we, as soon as they could, as soon as they could have agreed to our proposal, we could go ahead and start getting clay. If we were to find clay at that price somewhere else, then we could look at that, but if the board could agree to that, it'd take a, both the board to do it.
All right, all right, all aboard. Yeah, I'm, I'm motioning to move forward with it, Don, but I do want to ask you one question, and I don't even know if it's possible, don't even, no, we know, but what about the 200 acres that the county owns at their honeybee park, is there any way we can dip into that if the soil is good?
We, we are, we are, we have soil borers doing on that, and we would know probably in the same timeframe, the next couple of weeks, if the quality of that, and what we can do, you know, if we had to remove 10 foot of one type soil to get another type, anyway, let's take all that consideration, but we're doing soil borers on it.
Okay.
Only, only eighty acre site on 22, 200 acre site on 71, and also, we're doing, um, borers on a site there in Calhoun that we've been buying clay from.
And also, we, we're working with Desiree. And we should come up with something.
That's right, Desiree, I think that's a possibility, Mark, is Mark here? I think, Mark, we're gonna meet with Desiree and get a soil sample last week, not sure he did, uh, he got a soil sample of those, and we have those checked, make sure they, okay.
Motion by Commissioner Macklemore, move forward, do I have a second on this motion? Second by Commissioner Quinn, any discussion? Let me, uh, Don, proposals. Know where these pits are, and they are in close proximity, worth playing out of, uh, Calhoun, they come in ninety-five cents a yard, we still gonna be in a hole there because travel by those pits. Sounds like, I propose, get everything you can, look, and hopefully, we can work with these people, as far as keeping up with hammering, you know, we won't have someone out there counting dump trucks, we'll just simply go out and, uh, let people on our staff and do it, just cut out an acre, seven feet deep, and they can figure cubic yards to within a fraction. Anyone in the public have any, uh, input or any concerns over this? Anyone else on the board?
Mr. Chairman.
I've got a motion, second, is any opposition?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I can, just to ask that you include in your motion two items, you've indicated you're gonna go out to bid, two things you want to include under your policy is that it is an exceptional circumstance, cost savings to the county, and that it's time of the essence right now with the projects that are pending, so I'd ask you to include those with your motion, um, as Mr. Butler's indicated, you're gonna go out to bid immediately, but in the meantime, just to state that it is an exceptional circumstance under your policy.
Commissioner Macklemore, do you have any problem with that?
No, nothing to do with that.
Commissioner Quinn?
No opposition, motion pass four and oh.
All right, Mr. Butler.
Mr. Chairman, next item is due with food and shelter grant. I see Russ Scholes is here today, I talked to him late yesterday afternoon, concerning the food and shelter grant that the county commissioner's been acquiring, applying for and acquiring for the last several years, and, and the time is here now, like, at the end of this week, this application's gotta be, gotta be in. The, the reason for bringing it to you today, one reason is to get a yay or nay from the county commissioner, two, um, Stephanie Richardson, um, has been making applications for the board for the last several years. Stephanie's in the line, uh, in the next few months, she, she's training someone to take her job, um, so she's gonna be getting out, and, and one, we have to have someone come in and make application for, for this grant, and we, this, this food and shelter grant is really a whole load, and when we used to do commodity program back in Larry Wells worked with us, you know, uh, the grant, but like this year, we could get five thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. The federal government allows a hundred and eight dollars to, to administer this program. Add in the paper costs more than a hundred and eight dollars, that add in the paper, probably a couple hundred dollars, between two and three hundred dollars, for the deed add that we have put in the paper in the past, and, and two, um, we have to coordinate meetings, we have to administer the grant, we have to do the paperwork, at the end of the year, we have to do an audit on, on these monies, so we do, the amount of money that you put into this and the amount of labor you put into this exceeds the amount of money you get. So, so I want to put, one, I want to make sure the board knew that you put a lot more into it than what you get out of it, and people receiving this greatly needs this, they, they need those hot meals, and so, I, I just want to put it behind the board, it, it would be cheaper for the board, or unlikely to just appropriate five thousand dollars and give senior citizens, than to go spend more than five thousand to get five thousand and give senior citizens. So, just for the board consideration, I'm not even thinking about going out on the road and saying, they don't need this money, they need the money, um, but you spend more money than we get, is my point, and we can go out and we do it again, the board so chooses, we'll go out and we'll apply for it again and get the money, and then senior citizen will probably wind up being the one to get the funding for meals, hot meals, but, um, it would be cheaper on us to just appropriate five thousand dollars and give senior citizens after what we give them already, but if the board wants us to apply for it, that'd be great, if we want to make sure you knew that we are spending more money than we get.
Mr. Scholes, would you like to, please, vent you over there, give us some program?
Good morning. I'm Russ Scholes, um, resident of Goff County for a while and director of senior citizens. Um, we have had this, uh, grant for any number of years, and of course, in emergency times, you know, that's very needed, when there is no emergency, then we use it to feed our senior citizens, we, that's, that's really what we feed our people, you know, in the, in the center at Weewaw and here, um, so with the legislature doing what they have done to us in the past and changing the way the Medicaid waiver, um, worked, that took a great deal of funds from us. I'm not, the senior citizens is not wedded to this grant, but we, we desperately need the funds that it produces, so, you know, if, if, if you decide not to, uh, apply for this grant, which in, in some ways, it doesn't make sense to spend more money to, to get something than, than what you get, um, it definitely, we definitely need the funds so that we can provide these hot meals and feed these people.
Any questions? Concerning this? Anyone? Hey, Russ.
Thank you, sir, and, uh... I appreciate the opportunity of coming before y'all.
We always, uh, I think I can speak to the board, I know I speak myself, I am pro senior citizens, because we are the senior citizens.
That's it.
It's already there.
That's it.
But, uh, thank you again.
Good, thank you.
All right. And Mr. Chairman? Sure. I'm not gonna sit here and, and cut out the senior citizens. If the grant don't work, it's better to go for five thousand dollars, if we can budget that, Mr. Butler, with what you're telling me, that's the easy way out for us?
Easy way out?
Yeah, well, you know, I'm gonna feed them, uh, and, and, you know, if, I don't know how, how the rest of the board feels on it. Well, it's just more economical to go this route, we've looked at it, and I've, I've been involved with Scholes back here on this issue, and got me up to speed on it, and Mr. Butler, and I think between Mr., it just don't make sense to, uh, buy something for a dollar and sell it for fifty cents, think you've made a, a big profit off of it, if it's, uh, it's more economical to go this route, let's go that route, but still, they'll be getting their money for their services.
I can make one.
Sure, okay, so I, thank you. Let me, I, I just...
You got the floor.
Okay, I just go in and make the motion then that we budget for this, and if any of them hungry, Scholes, tell them to call me, I can find something to eat, always, at my home, but, but I'm, I'm gonna support this. Got a motion on the floor.
Second.
The second by Commissioner Quinn, unless any other further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just want to say, yeah, but in the past, it's always allowed some administrative fee, Goff County has never taken that administrative fee, always put it, you know, to whoever, in this case, most time, senior citizen gets the money, but a hundred and eight dollars does not come anywhere close to what it costs to administer the program, and my understanding is, we will find funding to replace this, uh, if you don't do this, uh, if you don't apply for it again. Two, another thing that's changed, we in the past, we've had two people working in emergency management, and it's been about three years, since, three or four years since Jean has left, and so we, we're down to one now, and that's, that's part of our problem in countywide, we have a lot of one-man bands, pretty much in the office you go into, we have one person, so where we had two, we could, I, you know, it didn't go with emergency management at all, we had some flexibility, we had two people, but for the last few years, we only had one, now that one's been doing it for the last ten years, it's gone, it's leaving, and, and another thing, another factor too, uh, David, he's been gone three weeks now, David Richardson, he retired three weeks ago, he sat on that board too. It's hard, part of the problem is trying to get a board every quarter or semi-annually to come in and, and sit down, it just, you get a meeting lined up, it doesn't hurt, can't get a court, then do it again, you can't get a court, so David's gone now, Steph is gonna be gone, so, I just want to throw that in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Butler.
Chairman, I do.
Sure, okay, we'll go here.
Um, of course, I, as everyone else on this board, um, am concerned for our senior citizens, and if we have a program in place that people rely on, uh, we need to be cautious with altering that, um, and I, I would venture to say that no person wants to have to pick up the phone and call county commissioner or a city attorney to get a meal, so that's why we put programs in place for people in need, so they don't have to make that call. However, my, my issue here is that, that this is something that clearly some of the, um, folks on this board are aware of, and I'm not aware of this situation with this grant being, um, economically, um, not advantageous, that we're gonna spend more than we get, but it should have been in this agenda, and that's what the purpose of this agenda is, because not only do we need to know about what we're gonna discuss, but everyone out there, everyone in this audience, in this room, and everyone in the viewing public needs to know what we're going to discuss, and somebody may have had great ideas that they could have come in here and shared with us on this program, they may have known about things that those of us up here around this, um, table don't know, but we didn't give them the opportunity, and this goes on again and again and again, and for us to have to sit here, now, clearly, there's people on this board that are, are just much more intelligent than I am, because they just come up with answers like that as something is laid out on the floor, but unfortunately, I like to be a little bit more contemplative about the actions that I take as a seated county commissioner, and I, I'm tired of things being placed out here and we vote with a knee-jerk reaction, or people are prepped, or people know, but it should be in this agenda, so the public can come in and speak on it, we are spending the public's money, and they have a right to know how we're doing it, so, you know, now you put me in a position to have to make a decision on something that I have very little information on, and of course, of course, if we are feeding the seniors, if there's a program in place for seniors in need, we don't want to just rip it out from under them, but I also don't want us spending more money than we need to spend to get money, so I, I just would like to ask that we make an effort to put these things into the agenda so that the public can, can prepare, and you've got people out there that this might be their main issue, they don't come to the meeting today because they have no idea it's going to be discussed, so again, I've said this for two years, and I'll continue to say it.
Thank you. Um, anyone else? Yes, Mr. Chairman, just one question. Mr. Butler, Mr. Butler, let's make sure we get our numbers right, is it five thousand? Is it plus, or is it under?
Well, the amount of money you could get this year. Could get this year is five thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars, and they do allow a hundred and eight dollars for administrative fee. My recommendation to the board, this is, this is gonna be a lot, a lot less cumbersome for the senior citizens to get a flat five thousand dollars, and we'd be get fifty-four eighteen, they have to go by all the rules, so my recommendation to the board would be five thousand dollars.
The motion stands. All right. The second by Commissioner Quinn, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience with any concerns over this? Yes, sir.
I want to make one more statement.
Sure. Come, come on up, Russ, where we can get it on the, uh, along on the audio, but the video.
I just want to make one more statement, and Don brought up the, the personnel that has administered this grant in the past, and they have absolutely been super, they have worked with us every way that they can, especially, uh, Stephanie, and, you know, I really hate to see her go, I'm glad that she's reached her term and age, but I want to thank the county and the county personnel for historically working with us on this grant, so, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, anyone else in the audience? If not, we'll call for, on the board, we'll call for the votes, any opposition to the vote? Not, motion pass four and...
Chairman, next item, for the board's information, I attended a meeting in Walton County Friday to do with, with each and do with the, uh, oilfield, to do with the, uh, estuaries and, and the concept of going out and, and several... to do with the estuaries and the concept of going out in several counties, six, seven, or eight counties, co-opting together and working through a beach nourishment program, working with DEP and working with the feds to figure out how we can keep our beaches in North Florida nursed. And in that meeting was state representative Doug Dawson from the west of here, he pretty much led the meeting, and he came down probably after the holidays and talked, Mr. Hammond I'll sit down and talk to him over in Mr. Yeager's office. And his idea, Doug's idea is, there's 23 counties that's affected by the oil spill, and really, eight counties are really affected, and the other counties to the south of us were affected less than we were. And they organizing, those counties to the south are organizing as we speak. And although we had organized early on, and we got, we pushed and got the restored money coming this way and did something that had never been done before, we need to, again, organize again to try to make sure we get our fair share of the monies, otherwise, we go where the vote is, which would be South Florida. And anyway, let the board know, we, I made that meeting Wednesday, Friday, and it was a very good meeting, it was a good starter meeting, probably going to be some good to come out of it at some point in time, maybe bring something back to the county commission for the county's consideration of, in a local agreement with other counties to try to co-opt with them on beach restoration, beach nourishment, where needed, you know, and working with other agencies. That's one thing. Tomorrow, in Commissioner Yeager's absence, he's out of town for a week, I'm going to sit on the consortium. He's your man on the consortium, I'm the alternate, I'll be in Tallahassee, it'll be 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, on the consortium, and some important things coming to commit. And then the next day, I'll be back in Tallahassee, I'll come back and go back to Tallahassee for the Florida County Foundation Board Directors meeting, which, that morning, Thursday morning, and in conjunction with legislative day, and I think the other commissioners are going for legislative day, but on Thursday. Just to let you know, just board's information, what I got lined up. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have, commissioners, I've been speaking with Commissioner Yeager since your last meeting. If you all recall, at your last meeting, on March 10th, you approved a blue ribbon committee for beach nourishment. And obviously, in the short time window that we have, we have a volunteer effort in the community, there's several people that live on the Cape that want to participate, and you appointed that committee. In the last two weeks, what we've obviously come to the realization is, as an advisory committee, they're subject to the sunshine, so it makes it very difficult for them all to be able to correspond or communicate with one another outside of formal meeting setting. You are all bound to the sunshine, this advisory board has a short window of time, and so in speaking with Commissioner Yeager, and I actually spoke with some of the individual members that you appointed, it'd be the recommendation that we'd ask that you'd withdraw or disband that advisory committee. What they'll do is they'll continue their efforts and work together, but they'll give me the opportunity to correspond and communicate with one another in the next three to four weeks. I've already had two resignations from that committee, so that they're enabled one another to communicate. But after speaking with Commissioner Yeager, it's his request and it's my recommendation that you would withdraw that appointment, give them all the ability to continue to volunteer their time and work for you all to come back with information prior to that May 18, MSTU vote.
Or you want us to vote to disband the committee?
Yes, sir, if you would, please, and they'll continue to volunteer their time.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Mclemore, disbandment of, secondization of the attorney. Second by, for the board discussion. Anyone in the audience, terms on this? There's no opposition, motion passed. 4-0 to end the committee.
And just for clarity, commissioners, they've all expressed their commitment, and they're going to continue to work. This just enables them to put more time into it and collaborate their efforts, so I thank them for their volunteer time. The second item I have is with regards to your RV hearings. You've instructed us at your last meeting, we had maps for the public and for you all to take into advisement. You instructed me to go forward with the public notice. We'll have those hearings on April 14th, and then again on the 28th. I just need a vote of this board, that I can have them both on those dates, the second on the 28th being at 9:00 in the morning as well. On the floor, statute 125, I just need affirmative vote of this board to schedule them both for that, those mornings during your regular meetings.
Chairman, can you just clarify the issue of the RVs that we?
Sure. Well, from the last two public, or last two regular meetings you've had, it's been instruction to me to go back and amend it per the map that I introduced to you at the last one. That's instructions to me, but I still need to have the public hearings for the public to come, and to be able to advertise those at least 10 days prior to the first public hearing, which will be on the 14th.
The two that you want are the two areas, geographical areas?
Uh, not, I don't want, you all instructed me to make them consistent with the CCL, yes.
Okay, so you said that you could do both in one day?
Uh, no, I, no, yeah. We're going to do two different public hearings. Florida statute 125 subsection 66 requires you to have one of those two at 5:01 PM.
Okay.
Barring a, from the vote of this commission, that lets me have them both during your regular meetings, so we can have them both during the 14th and the 28th.
I see, okay, I'm just wondering.
I just need a vote on the record, instructed me to do that, and then I'll advertise them accordingly.
To advertise for the public hearings and schedule them.
That's correct.
Ah, so moved.
All right, got them. Motion by Commissioner. Brian, I need a second. Second by Commissioner Mclemore. Any further board discussion?
Say the 14th, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, someone asking, the 14th and the 28th?
The 28th. You're two regular meetings.
It'll be at our regular meeting, that way you'll have more people here, and lacking those 5:01, you may not have three to five people here on something.
Correct.
For input here. I've got a motion, second. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience, any input on this? If not, opposition, motion passed. 4-0 to have the meeting, the public hearings at 9:00 AM on April the 14th and at 9:00 AM on April the 28th. Am I correct there?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Next.
The next one, just to give you all an update, at our last few meetings, you adopted the Leaning of Trace on January 27th. The staff is close to completing the implementation that you all instructed us under the ordinance to do. Just wanted to report to you all that we've worked with the TDC and the administration, they've gone ahead and approved the tags that will be created, and once that's done, the application will be available through our tax collector's office. This is something that they'll look like, and then there'll be a plastic, bright colored, orange or green tag. Once they're available, they'll be provided to Ms. Jenkins' office, and the applications will be available there as well. In addition to that, your other ordinance, in the Leaning of Trace, your beach driving, at the last meeting, we discussed the fees and the amount issued to businesses and individuals. We've completed that application, we had meetings with staff, and we revised it to the point where it was hopefully easy for the public to fill out the application and secure those for the fees that you set. And that's all now been implemented for the public's information. They just need to show proof of their driver's license, insurance, and some other, and sign an affidavit at the Ms. Jenkins' office, and they'll be able to secure their beach driving tags. The next item I have is with regards to redistricting. Commissioners, I had sent to you all on March 16th an update and an attachment, which was a complaint filed by the ACLU Foundation of Florida. They filed a suit against Jefferson County for the redistricting, their most recent redistricting. I provided you all a complaint, a copy of the complaint that had been filed. I've also spoken with Mr. Spellman, who is analyzing both the ACLU's complaint and has now indicated he will be attending your, ideally, your next meeting to give you all his recommendations on how to move forward in light of that federal case being filed, the one that I provided to you. So I anticipate we'll have him on the agenda at your April meeting, and he'll be able to come and give you all an update on that lawsuit, and how it impacts Gulf County. The last item I have is also with regards to another suit. Judge Fischel has issued an order dismissing the case against the county filed by Mr. Boe Williams. He signed that order on March 16th, and that case has now been dismissed with prejudice by the judge. That's all I have this morning.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sana?
Yes, sir.
All right. Please.
Good morning.
Morning.
About a week and a half ago, the insurance committee met. Unfortunately, I was not in attendance due to illness, but they did discuss going out for RFP for property casualty insurance, and also possible RFP for all our ancillary coverages for the health side, and doing away with American Fidelity, who is our third-party administrator currently for the ancillary coverage. I just need permission to move forward with those RFPs.
Okay. Have a motion?
So moved.
By Commissioner Brian. Second, second by Commissioner. Anyone in the audience? No, it's no opposition. Yes, 4.
Thank you.
How's work? Miss Kim?
We received the necessary paperwork to repair the Bird Parker Drive blowout near the road. I would like the board to, or like to ask the board to get permission for us to close Bird Parker Drive while we work on the road, and to use our two signs to let the public know that that road is closed, because once we take that guardrail up, we're going to have to, we've got some things we're going to do to make sure that road stays closed for the time that we need to fix the problem on Bird Parker Drive.
Right. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Mclemore. I'm coming. Your second. Second by Commissioner Quinn. Now, we'll, more discussion.
We worked a long time on this, and this road, just for the public, ones watching on television up in the WeRish area, going to have to use the road to perform the work. It's got to be closed off, barricaded. Now, we will set up the barricades there, there's probably five or six houses on the last exit, so we don't want the people, we need to put our barricades up to where people won't drive there and then got to back a boat and trailer into someone's yard. But plans are, for the public, we're going to dump dirt on the, on the road, on the pavement, because when these trucks back in there to dump this riprap, we don't want to damage the road and then have to turn around and repave the road. So we will put a buffer sand or clay there where our excavator trucks dump, it can push it into the water. So, yes, we will, chair, we will have this blocked off, and it will be cleared, but the people that live in there, they can still have access to get to their houses, come out, we just want to stop the crew traffic in there.
All right. Got a motion, second. Anyone in the audience? Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? No opposition? Motion passed 4-0, so proceed. Thank you. Mr. Danforth?
I had a meeting last week with DEP out of Five Points. We had our final, hopefully, Five Points inspection, and we also looked over the two sites out there that we will be closing. It was a pretty good meeting, we got several questions answered, and looking forward to getting a letter from DEP about the closure of the Phase 1 site that is considered officially I received on Friday a proposal from Preble Rish for the engineering portion of the closure. There are some things that it does not cover, it does not cover geotechnical inspection during closure of Five Points. As you know, we got to put eight, we got to put 18 inches of clay on top of Five Points that is impermeable to one times 10 to the negative fifth. That's pretty impermeable, and it has to be compacted to a specified amount. Now, that's part of what Don was talking about, the amount of clay that we're going to need to cover those two sites is quite a bit. It could run 80,000 to 100,000 cubic yards. We don't know yet because we don't have the closure specs, the amount of size of the landfill that actually is going to close. So what I got from Preble Rish is a proposal to do the engineering work, the tapos, the geotechnical design permitting, construction administration, and project certification for $41,150. I'd like to get the chairman's signature on this. Leanne, I tried to email it to you, but my email was rejected, so therefore, the server must be female, so.
Anyway, let's get back to the point here. $41,150.
Yes, sir.
Now, let me ask you a question, too. Have, for the public, do we have DEP permit in hand to proceed? Do we have it?
This is to get the permit.
Okay, all right, I just, everybody needs to be up, you have to go through, here we are, we in, you might say, April, and we need it closed by September. It'll be a miracle.
I told you, you probably wouldn't have it closed by September.
Well, maybe we should have started working a lot sooner on it. But anyway, that's hindsight, that's water on the bridge. But we've got to do this in order to secure this permit from DEP.
Yes.
Correct there?
Yes, sir.
All right, I give you a motion.
Now, let me turn over here to Commissioner, he has something.
Yeah, well, go ahead, I give him the motion, go ahead, because we're going to have to do it, but, Joe, I do have a question. Do we have monies in escrow that we might go out and bid some, just work out? I mean, that's going to be a lot of dirt.
That's my next part, next thing I was going to get to do after this.
You bring any of that in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, finish, then we'll go to the motion. Go ahead, on the landfill now.
Okay. It's $41,150 from Preble Rish proposal. I need board approval on that.
Did you have all the parts there?
As soon as I get approval on that.
Okay, all right. I need a motion for the $41,150 for Preble Rish engineering.
We have a motion by Mr. Mclemore.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any further board discussion? Anyone? Anyone in the audience? No opposition, motion passed 4-0.
That is an escrow-funded item, okay. The next part is, this is a whole lot of work. We have diminished public works, and as you just discussed, we got work going on at Bird Parker, we got work going on at 30-acre site, we don't have enough people to do this work. I would like permission to seek proposals from qualified contractors to close Five Points or to do specific parts of closure of Five Points. We may have to negotiate, but I would like to be able to cover, cover that whole range.
Mr. Danforth, we don't have the three trucks, do we?
Three trucks.
Yeah, I'm so moved to have them to move forward with this. We have the money, got to put people to work, got to help us close the landfill faster, so we need to move with it. We're going to get proposals?
Yes.
It's going to come out to this board, and we're going to look that over.
As soon as we, as soon as we have the Preble Rish designs, then we can seek proposals. We have to get their designs first.
A motion. All right, this is to contract out. Now, have a second. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience concerned over this? No, motion passes 4-0.
I'm good to go.
All right, thank you, thank you, Joe. Paul?
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Whitfield?
Good.
Ms. Jenkins?
Nothing.
Up over here. Sheriff, to thank, Commissioner Quinn, do you have anything before the board today? Commissioner Mclemore?
Just one question to Ms. Carey, and I don't want to put you on the
Just one question to Ms. Carey, and I don't wanna put you on the spot. Where do we at on that Salisbury Creek project down there?
I am trying to get a response from somebody. I've been trying for several weeks and can't get a reply from anyone.
When you say anyone, who are you talking about?
FWC.
Okay, now we got it.
That, we sent the bid specs and everything for, it has to be approved by them, the bid and everything, before we can send it out. And we haven't gotten anything back from them.
Okay.
I tried repeatedly.
Okay.
To find out.
All right. That's fine, just keep trying, so I'll wait and see. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. You have the floor.
I, we had a special meeting in February that unfortunately I had to leave before it concluded, and I was able to go back and watch the meeting, the, part of the meeting that I missed. And I had just a few questions regarding some issues that were discussed, and maybe you can help me out with this. It's regarding the Old Bay City Road project. Apparently, the, the contract was awarded at the meeting and then shortly after that, at the same meeting, we did a change order. So I was just trying to understand the makeup of that, that contract. And maybe, maybe, Carey, you could help me with the grant, just some specific questions about the grant. I guess the grant money came in less than what we had bid for?
Yes.
So is there, we went out for bid, the advertisement went out on February 1st. When did we know that the amount came in less than what we had anticipated?
Typically, on those grants when we apply for them, each one, the scrap and the SCAP and SIGP, they have different amounts that they will fund. SIGP, which is the Old Bay City Road, typically will fund fifty percent.
Okay.
Typically, the county matches fifty percent, but because we're a rural county, we get weighed that match. And so we typically, they typically have that amount programmed in, and you can look at DOT's five-year plan and they show how much is, is programmed in for the grant.
Mm-hmm.
We go out for bid and we typically try to bid the whole project.
Okay, so we go out based on what they program in, although it may not come out at that amount?
Yeah, typically, that's what happens. We, we go out for bid for the entire amount that we applied for in the grant, but we, we do that knowing that we're only gonna get fifty percent of the money. But hopefully, the costs will come in, so we may be able to do a little more. But if we go out for bid only for half of that segment, then that's all we can do.
Okay, so we know we're only gonna get fifty percent of?
On SIGP, on the Old Bay City Road.
So what type of grant was the Old Bay City Road?
SIGP, County Incentive Grant Program.
Okay. And so should I assume that the amount that we ended up with, which was two million, eighty-three thousand, nine eighty-four, I don't expect you to have that number in front of you, can we assume that the amount, the amount that was programmed in was twice that and we got fifty percent?
Would, yes, we, we would've requested twice that.
Okay, so then when we did the change order, I, I know Mr. Smallwood was here from Preble Rish, and it was discussed that the engineering costs were two-hundred-and-sixty thousand plus. And does that cover the full length? Because it, it looks like we, we just shortened the amount of the road that we will pave. So would the engineering cover the full length of the road prior to shortening it and it's already in place if we go back and pave the rest? Or was the engineering part back as well?
Typically, the engineering is based on the amount of the grant, like it's a certain percent of the grant, not the whole project.
All right, well.
Because we, we do, we negotiate that amount after we know what we've been awarded.
And, and this, this question is probably just, you know, people are talking and you estimate, and I do that as well. But in the discussion that I watched in the meeting, it was discussed at five-point-two or five-point-three miles, but the actual advertisement for bid that ran was four-point-five. So is, was that the actual amount that we were bidding was for four-point-five miles? What was actually in the advertisement?
Possibly, yes. It, it, what we may have done is found a good stopping point for the road paving, like at the intersection of another road or something like that, and then bid that.
Okay.
Because it's, it's typically an estimate when we do the, the grant applications, we estimate the length of the, of the road. Same with Jared Daniels Road that we're doing now. It's a SCAP grant, so it only pays seventy-five percent. But it's like they were talking about earlier, if we can get the, the clay cheaper and work out something with the contractor, then it's possible that instead of only being able to pave seventy-five percent of the road, that we can, we can do a change order, maybe provide some of the clay or something like that in order to do the whole thing.
Okay. So still the engineering was discussed in the original word of the bid at that amount, that two-hundred-and-sixty thousand plus. And then when we came back in and change ordered it, there was never any real full discussion about what the change order consisted of, other than that we were going to cut it back to a little over three miles. So I'm a little, I'm a little confused about the amount of the engineering. And maybe, Mr. Chairman, maybe you can help me with this regarding how the board change ordered this contract. I, I, just watching it, I, I'm uncertain. And I know that Mr. Smallwood said that it was just over three miles. So if I sit down and take the math, the low bid was GAC and it was five-eleven, one-thirteen per mile, if you use five miles. But if we go by what the advertisement said, so I'm gonna assume that was correct because that's what we ran as, as the bid, that was four-point-five miles. So that takes it up to five-sixty-seven, nine-oh-four per mile. So just for the benefit of the doubt, but we'll use that. But if we go back in and look at the change order for three miles, it comes out to six-oh-seven, eight-twenty-eight a mile. Now, the highest bidder, and I think there were five bids, I have the bid sheet here, but the highest bidder was still at six-oh-two, six-seventy-nine a mile. So when we originally bid it, even the highest bidder was lower than what we came out with after the change order. So what we did is, we, we bid something and then we came in and said we don't have enough money. So we just let, we just decided to let the low bidder, who bid on something we're not doing, have the bid and just pave what we think they could pay for the amount of the grant. And I don't understand why we wouldn't have gone out and rebid it or an appropriate bid. There may have been smaller contractors that would've bid on it because they could get the bonding for that amount. There may have been larger contractors that would've bid on it because they could handle that amount of paving, three, maybe they didn't have time to do five in their schedules. But I, I'm not certain why we wouldn't go out and rebid it, because it's a, it's a different project. And it was kind of surprising to me to see the board award a contract and then discuss another issue briefly and then come back and do a change order. So, Mr. Chairman, can you help me with that?
I'm not gonna make any commitment here till I go back and look at the tape. Now, I can maybe drop over here to our county administrator and see if I can get some input from him. But my understanding was, we bid the whole nine yards, and that was one thing, we're working with the dirt, the contractors, that we might be, maybe three-quarters of a mile short. But dirt and all, we might get the whole nine yards. If not, we'd have to pick it up in the next budget cycle. Can you shed any on this? I'm not gonna make a commitment while I look at the tape.
My first question, I think I know the answer to it. First question is, for one, did we, did the county commissioner award to the low bidder?
Yes.
Got that one.
Yes, I have it.
Then, that pretty much says it all. We're awarding the low bidder. Now, we, we never know what the unit prices are gonna come in at. You never know, that's one of your big jobs, you don't know what's gonna come in. If you got ten dollars to do something and unit prices come in, you know how poor down the road, you go with ten dollars. So what we do, we get the most out of the grant we can get based on the low bid. And only thing I know the commissioner do is to award to the low bid unless that bid is not responsive to what we want, and this one was.
But, but we, all right, we advertised the bid on February 1st and the bids were due February 13th. So on February 19th, this board had a special meeting, wasn't a regular meeting, it was a special meeting, and it was on the agenda as road paving, road paving. And we awarded this bid to, yes, the lowest bidder on a approximately five-mile project, and, and then immediately change ordered it. So we did a change order when there wasn't even really a contract in place, which I've never, I've never heard of us, of anyone change ordering a contract that wasn't in place. But it seems to me that even if it's grant money, it's still public dollars. We still have the responsibility to spend it properly. And how many miles could we have had paved if we had rebid with this amount? We may have come up with more paving. And, and watching it all happen, it happened very quickly. There was little to no discussion from the time that this bid award came up, to the time that it was voted on, the road bonds were discussed briefly, came back and did a change order, and it was complete. Nine minutes, all of that took place in nine minutes. And we're talking about a two-and-a-half million dollar bid, and the final award was just over two million. Two million, eighty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand. I, I just have a lot of questions about this, and I think this should've been rebid. Because again, I, I want, I want, Mr. Chairman, I want you to understand that your getting, your per-mile cost is up five thousand dollars over your highest bidder on this bid sheet. So what about the, the second bid, CW Roberts? They came in not that much over the low bid.
I'm a pretty.
That's right. So is there a reason that we couldn't go out and rebid, why we had to award this on a special meeting?
I regret that you were not able to be, you had to leave the meeting earlier, then this might've, could've been addressed then. But as I said before, until I go look at the tape, go over it and axe and the figures, that this Bay City Road's been going on for what, three years?
Longer.
Longer than that. And we've had to do it in segments. I, I can't answer the question you asked here without going back and researching.
Typically, when we bid these roads like this, the more, the longer the, the amount that you bid, the better price you get on the road.
And certainly, you would have the economies of scale. But this is quite a bit more than that. And we won't know because we didn't have the opportunity to bid. Now, now I have a question back to you.
Okay.
The engineering was apparently for the full amount, four-and-a-half or five miles. When we go back to do the next two miles, will there be more engineering costs? Or have we paid those engineering costs?
Typically, the engineering cost is based on the grant amount, not the mileage, not how long the road is.
And, and watching the meeting, it appeared that that amount was stated during the first discussion where we awarded the bid, was not revised when we went back into the change order. And maybe I missed something there, but it didn't appear that the amount of the engineering changed when the grant amount changed.
The grant, the grant amount didn't change.
Well, okay, so you're saying that when we awarded that bid of two million, five plus, that the amount of the engineering that was stated by Mr. Smallwood was already based on the new grant amount and not on the amount of that bid?
That's correct.
So when the board voted then on the contract, we knew that it, we couldn't pay that, even when we took the vote?
And probably, and the way that I did it before was, anytime we do the small county grants, if I know the bid is more than what we have, I usually, whenever I would bring it before the board, I would let them know this bid exceeds the amount of the grant and, you know, request permission at that time to go back and, and walk with the contractors to scale it back to stay within the grant amount. And, you know, that's where the, the contract and the change order come in at the same time.
So, well, Mr. Smallwood, and maybe he can help us out if, if we need him to, I see that he's here. He stated that there was more money programmed into the FDOT for, to, to come back in and finish the road. And he said that there was eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand more that would come out in July, which is, I guess, when our new fiscal year starts, for the next two miles. Now, if it, if that is true, eight-sixty for two miles, that's only four-hundred-and-thirty thousand per mile, which we're already at six-oh-seven. So, and that's a shorter, so that, that wouldn't even be the economies of scale, so it's two miles. So how are we gonna pave two miles for four-thirty a mile when we can pay just over, pave just over three for six-oh-seven plus a mile? I don't, I don't know.
We don't know if we can until we bid it. We might not be able to bid the whole way because it's only fifty percent grant.
Okay, so that's my point. And thank you, Ms. Kapinski, but that's my point. So if we had rebid this, we may have gotten more out of it. Now, Mr. Smallwood said that we can only get a little over three miles out of it. I don't know what that's based on, but now we have two miles left with this eight-hundred-and-sixty left in, in the programming for next year. So to me, none of the figures make sense. And I think that when this board is gonna be awarding contracts, we should understand what the figures are. And again, this was not noticed to the public, it only said road paving.
I think we had five bidders, didn't we, Mr. Chairman, on this project?
I have the bid sheet right here.
Five, maybe six, I, I don't know.
And I'm, I'm sure they would've liked to have the opportunity to bid on the proper project.
Now, I listened to you now. I just wanna make a comment to you. We had four, five bidders on this. Mr. Butler says it plain as day, we awarded the bid to the low bidder. You know, we've been talking about this project for three years now, been going on with this. I'm sorry you wasn't here, you know, at the meeting, but we went ahead and took our bid. That's what this board has elected today. So.
That's, that's all I'm saying. Back to you.
Yeah, one more comment. Yeah, you, you did award to the low bidder, but then you immediately changed ordered the contract, which made them higher than the high bidder.
But you have any more on this?
No, no.
Till I look, I can't.
That's, that's not correct.
Say that again.
That can't be correct. If that's correct, I mean, we could award to the high bidder and get a cheaper price. We're loaded, we're awarded to the low bid, and we, we have X number of dollars. So we have to scale the project back to fit the number of dollars. This is not a project where we're gonna pave Old Bay City Road in its entirety with local county taxpayer dollars. We're using state dollars to do it. So we have no clue, so to speak. We don't really know how far the state dollars will go. So we bid the job, and you don't want to underestimate and, and not engineer enough roadway for the amount of state money. So you engineer enough roadway to, to use up all the state monies. And so if it comes in, whatever comes in, then we know what the unit prices are, we know what the per-foot cost or per-mile cost is, and then we, it's a simple math, we go down the road, it pours the money where it goes, and then we stop. Then hopefully, we get another grant next year and we do it again. Engineers will wind up getting paid based on a percentage.
Of the grant.
If they engineer a hundred miles and we only pay a mile, they can get paid for that one mile, what, the amount of money it takes to pave that one mile. So we awarded to the low bidder, and, and that's all, I don't know anything else we can do but do the low bidder, and then the unit price. The high bidder had a higher unit price. do the low bidder. And then, the unit price, the high bidder has a higher unit price, higher per foot price, higher per mile price. And so, as long as you stay with low bidder, you're going to win, you're going to win every time. So, no, you're awarded to the low bidder.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a couple more comments.
Alright, Wendy, go ahead.
Um, first of all, I will say again, that grant money is not free money. It may not come out of our county tax coffers, but it is taxpayer money. The government doesn't create money. They don't have a money tree behind the state capital. It is state taxpayer dollars. And, it may come from the federal government and trickle down into the state, but if, if the people are in Wisconsin are paying the taxes, it's still taxpayer dollars. And then, our taxes go there. Any government dollar is taxpayer money. Alright? And, I hate it when we talk about grants like it's free money. But, you're talking about the per-unit cost, the per-mile cost. And, I've walked through those, that per-mile cost. And, in the original bid, GAC was the low bidder on that per-mile cost. But, when you come back in and factor what we're paying, and what we're getting paved, the per-mile cost goes up to 607,828. And, your highest bidder on the original bid for four and a half miles, that's giving them four and a half. That's 602,679. So, it's still higher. Now, if you want to say five miles, it was 542 for 11 a mile. So, we're at 607. We're, we are higher than anybody on that bid, if we paid three miles. And, I do understand the economies of scale. But, we went from 511 for five miles, 567 for four and a half miles, to 607 for three miles. So, your, your argument about the per-unit cost always winning, we lost it, because we lost the taxpayers' loss.
That's it. Smallwood, I recognize you.
Close, Smallwood, preparation. It's, when you're talking per-unit cost, we don't look at it per mile. In the bid form, it's a unit price job. So, there's tons of asphalt. There's square yards aside, cubic yards of borrow, et cetera, linear feet of striping. When the bids come in, you have unit prices for each of those. You scale back the quantities. You know, if you shorten the road, then it's less tonnage of asphalt. That's less linear feet of striping. That's less borrowed material. It's not always going to work out when you look at it a per-mile cost, because of, more likely because of the borrow. Every linear foot of roadway doesn't have the same amount of borrowed material on it. Some, there's going to be more, some's going to be less. And so, you take the bids that come in, you know what your construction budget is, and you scale back your quantities using the low bid unit prices, and that's how you get to the number. So, you're not looking at it as a per-mile cost. That's not how we look at it.
Well, and I understand that. And, clearly, a lot more goes into it than, than that. This is all, this is all that we see when we awarded bid, just a, a name of a company and the amount of the bid. We don't see any of the breakdown on this board. However, if, if you're looking at that unit cost, are, are you representing to me that, based on the way that this has come out after the change order, that if we go back in and look at all of the elements that you discussed from this original bid, that it would still come out cheaper for the three-mile stretch?
Cheaper than...
Cheaper than any other bids. It would still be the low bid.
Would the low bid still be the low bid?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, can you share those items with me?
The clerk has all of that.
Alright.
When they receive the bids, they get the entire bid package. We actually get a copy from the clerk.
I, I would like to make a request from the clerk's office for those items from the bids. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything else, Commissioner? Yeah, the commission chair has nothing. At this time, we will go to the, uh, no. Mr. Jason Peters of Gulf Coast Parkway, are you here, sir?
Yes, sir.
Please, you and your delegation, if you have anyone, come up, please.
The preferred place you want us to place the board is this corner.
It doesn't matter. You can put it over here, there, either way. Morning to you.
Good morning, Chairman. How are you, sir?
Thank you.
Like I said, we have a display board, so we just wanted to...
It's Gulf Coast Parkway.
Can everyone see that? Can you see that pretty well? Okay. Well, good morning, Chairman McDaniel, members of the commission. As you said, my name's Jason Peters. I'm the Director of Transportation Development for District 3. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Kind of want to state this as the, uh, my statement says, the state of the state, I guess you'd say, the state of the state of Gulf Coast Parkway. Uh, want to just kind of give a, a quick history. As most of you probably know, the Gulf Coast Parkway study actually began back in August of 2005. Excuse me. We had, uh, project kickoff meetings during that time in Bay and Gulf County, uh, back in November of 2005. And then, uh, at, in 2008, uh, actually, this project was initiated by Opportunity Florida. And, in 2008, uh, the Federal Highway Administration requested that the department take over the administration of, of the project. So, we went back, made sure that the procurement of the contract was in accordance with federal requirements, and then we moved forward with the study. Um, initially, with our kickoff meetings, we had, there was about 18 alternatives that was actually developed as part of this study, uh, when it began back in 2005. Uh, three corridor workshops that took place basically in 2008. That doesn't seem like a very long time, does it? But, that was 10 years ago, roughly. Uh, we've been working on this study for about 10 years. Uh, through those corridor workshops with the, uh, public involvement in, uh, Bay County and Gulf County, uh, we were actually able to, uh, work with our, our federal partners and our public to eliminate those corridors, taking things that's similar, uh, kind of throwing some of those out, uh, through that process. And, we, we were able to reduce the 18 alternatives down to the five that you see there. Uh, and that took place in, in 2008. Um, we have some alternatives meetings, additional public meetings, uh, in October of 2009, as we were further developing this, uh, environmental study, both in, in Bay County and, uh, here in Gulf County, to, to further develop these five alternatives. Um, it's been an extensive study. Like I said, it's taken about 10 years, uh, because of it requiring, uh, a type of document at the federal level of an environmental impact statement, because it's basically on virgin alignment. Those type studies take a lot longer time to develop. We had public hearings on, uh, the Gulf Coast Parkway back in May of 2014, here in, in Port St. Joe, and also we had, uh, a public hearing in Panama City. Um, at the completion of that, and, and, and as we presented in the public meetings in both locations, Alternative 17 was the preferred alternative by the public. That is, uh, the one in green, uh, as you can see. Alternative 17, uh, meant, it was, uh, it meant most favored, the, the purpose and need of the study, uh, the environmental data supported it, because it had the least impact, uh, the public involvement, uh, the physical, social, threatening and dangerous species, your floodplain impacts, all those environmental, uh, uh, factors that you have to quantify, reflected Alternative 17. After the, the public hearings, uh, that we had back in May, uh, some delegation with Gulf County, uh, I believe you, you were actually there, you and Commissioner Jaeger actually met with Secretary Prasad, uh, shortly after that, and, uh, had a discussion about, about the Gulf Coast Parkway. And, and I was actually at that meeting as well. And, and some of the, uh, the commissioner had, had mentioned some, uh, some consider, consideration of, was there something else, you know, could we look at something else, a different alternative? And, I think, based on that meeting, the commission, uh, Secretary basically said, submit a resolution on the alternative that, that you would like, and then maybe something that you could live with, I think was actually the words he used. And, and after that meeting, he asked, uh, if we could have a, myself and my staff, could we have a, a conversation with FHWA and see at best, on this point in time, uh, with Alternative 17 being the preferred alternative, was there an opportunity to, uh, propose something else, a, a different alternative? Um, we did do that. We had a conversation with FHWA. Uh, actually, Alternative 17 and Alternative 19, uh, were actually similar in nature as far as environmental impacts and things of that nature. Uh, some of the things that we actually spoke about with FHWA was, was, um, economic development, uh, certainly the, the efforts with the poor here in, uh, St. Joe. And, uh, prior to, well, actually, during the time of this study ongoing, the, uh, the Bay County Intermodal Distribution Center was actually constructed. And so, based on those two factors, FHWA basically, uh, said that, yes, it appears that you could potentially, uh, propose or recommend a, a, an alternative, preferred alternative, other than Alternative 17. And, it was based on the fact that, if you look at all the data, the environmental data, the traffic, all the things, Alternative 17 was basically one in all categories. 19 ran right behind it, basically, as far as impacts, things of that nature. So, when you account for, um, economic development, regionalism, I guess you'd say, and, and the fact that Gulf County had desired a more northern connection at 231, uh, taking all those factors in, FHWA basically gave us an indication that, yes, you could probably justify a separate alternative. Um, in order to do that, and that's why we're here today, in order to do that, uh, FHWA basically said that, uh, in order to, to submit an alternative, other than Alternative 17, we one had, we would have to, one, get consensus from, uh, Bay County and, uh, Gulf County in the form of, basically, Gulf County could support, Bay County could support, uh, Alternative 19. Uh, at this point in our conversations, it appears that, uh, if that is the case, uh, we could potentially, there could potentially be a need to go back to the public, have another public hearing. And then, at the end of the day, um, it's, it will be up to us, uh, FDOT, to justify or demonstrate, uh, the, why Alternative 19 would be better supported, uh, than, than, uh, Alternative 17. Uh, that document then goes, as you know, FHWA does a, what is a legal sufficiency review. Basically, uh, it's the checks and balances of, have you done your due diligence? Have you minimized impacts? Uh, and, and you're, weight in your public involvement. So, it would have to go through that, uh, legal sufficiency. But, the purpose of us being here today is, is we know that Gulf County did pass a resolution, uh, for, uh, Alternative 14 and 15.
Could you take a moment and...
Yes, sir. And, and I'm sorry, the lines, the lines are blurred. Um, how best can I get here? If you look at, if you look at all the alternatives for, uh, for conversation purposes, when you look at purpose and need, one of the major factors of the purpose and need, and I have this, one of the major factors is, is Temple Air Force Base. As you know, they, they actually own the property that's on 98. They can basically close 98 at any time. We're actually there by permission. Uh, so, one of the purpose and needs of the, the study was economic development. It was an evacuation route. It was, uh, also getting commuters to business centers, uh, working centers. So, all of the, the alignments, alternatives that you see, they all basically have something in common, and that's the connection back into 98. That addresses that temple issue, uh, the economic, you know, commuters back and forth into economic centers, things of that nature. The difference, as the chairman is talking about, is Alternative 14 and 15 are the, the orange and kind of the cream that basically runs, um, here's, this is actually Alternative 15 that comes up through here in the orange. And, as you'll notice, it also has that connection tying back into the, uh, the business centers. Uh, and then, Alternative 14, basically the...
Okay. You're going to have to come back to the mic. But, the one that Gulf County, while you're there, the one that Gulf County originally proposed was the one to the northerly, that's the one we wanted. And then, uh, and that was the one that was supposed to go. And, all of a sudden, they had a little quick, quick meeting, and we decided we're going to move it over to Walmart store. That's exactly what they did. Gulf County got completely out. Project for Gulf County and Franklin County to start with. But, money talks, you know. Money talks. Alright, go ahead.
The data that we have to this point, as I said, as far as the, the environmental sensitive areas and danger, all those environmental impacts, actually, uh, at, at this point, reflects Alternative 17 having the least impacts, um, and best serves the purpose and need. The purpose of our, our, us being here today, as I said, in our conversations with FHWA, uh, we feel like that, uh, there is a opportunity to, uh, recommend Alternative 19, as I said, if we can get, uh, consensus. So, the purpose of us being here today is actually, if it is the desire of the commission, Gulf County, uh, and we'll have, we'll be doing, uh, basically the same meeting at Bay County, if it is the desire of the commission to support Alternative 19, uh, we're, we're asking consideration of that in the form of a statement or a resolution to move forward with, uh, Alternative 19. But, it's if, it's if and only if we can get those consensus with Bay County and Gulf County, that we could look at Alternative 19.
Alright, 17, the people out there, they can't see it. It's in the green there, in the blue. It's, uh, pretty much all in Bay County.
17's here.
Yeah. Yeah, I can see it, but the people in the audience can't see. Uh, 17, am I correct, uh, Mr. Butler? 17 and 19 are all in Bay County.
Take the Walmart.
Is that true?
17 and 19...
99.99% is in Bay County.
Yes, sir.
Alright, let's drop over to the one going after, what is it, uh, 14 and 15. Let me take it. I, I can't understand why you want to take, uh...
This, this area through here?
Yes.
Has, has the highest in terms of endangered species, uh, wetland impacts, floodplain encroachment. In fact, the agency, this, this crossing here across the actual, the, East Bay, I should say, this crossing was actually recommended by the, the Red State Agency, and that it has the least impact, because basically spanning through bridge, you're, you're minimized, you're, you're not really impacting, uh, wetlands, floodplain areas in that area. So, the, the reasons being, like I said, they own the environmental, the public input. And in fact, uh, at our last public meeting, the public meeting we had here in Gulf County, uh, we had eight of the responders, we, we actually had people that either submitted cards, or either had the surveys they, they wrote in. Forty-eight percent of the, the cards that we received favored the project. There was, we, we received some that, that basically didn't want the project, but 48% favored. Of that, 61% of the public, the, the citizens in Gulf County supported Alternative 17. And so, um...
Gulf County?
Yes, sir.
Or had.
Sir?
Yes, or hadn't supported it.
I, the, the, the public comments, the, the public comments, when we, when we do our public hearings, we give out cards and allow the citizens the opportunity to provide input and, and do the survey. cards and allow the citizens the opportunity to provide input and do the survey.
I don't buy that. I don't mean. I was at the meeting out there. Only reason they were down, and it was very good to see you, hadn't seen you in a while, wasn't for the goodness of the heart of the good people of Gulf County, it was because you were required to do it. And that's where all the change took place out there. We were under the impression, try to move traffic forward. Now, you're gonna have to build another bridge. Catch one of those found on beach mouths and turn him loose over there, and they'll stop all that.
Let me ask a question, just, chair.
Yes, sir.
I want to ask you a question, touch on something. You mentioned the environment.
Yes, sir.
On fifteen, on fifteen, three eighty-six. If you would, go back up there and point where you pointed, right there, where fifteen dogs back out. Are you taking that off from the thirty-six highway right there? You must be, because you.
That's three eighty-six.
You're talking about running over rats and everything else. We've already got a highway there.
Yes, sir, three eighty-six takes off back this way. This is three eighty-six.
Okay. Okay, that explains my question now.
No.
Hold you just a moment, let me go over here.
Yeah, I just, Jason, you said in order to build a consensus, it's gotta be Bay and Gulf County coming together and offering something you can take to FHWA.
Basically, a support of nineteen, yes.
Your task was getting the consensus from both, get Bay and Gulf to take that back to them. So, it would be a joint resolution between the two counties supporting that, if they came to a consensus?
Well, I use the term consensus. It's basically, they said if Gulf County and Bay County can support alternative nineteen, we could recommend that as a preferred alternative. I apologize for the, not the consensus. Basically, as it stands today, like I said, the preferred alternative is supported by the, everything in terms of data, things of that nature of seventeen. And they're saying we could recommend a separate alternative, alternative nineteen, if Bay County could support it, and if Gulf County could support alternative nineteen.
It just, when Mr. Butler and Commissioner Yegel and myself met with you and the secretary and all, they had expressed, obviously, those other concerns, those other factors. And you mentioned that two of the three are addressed by that alternative route, but the third, obviously, being the evacuation, that was emphasized, being, takes you into the center of commerce, which doesn't really address the evacuation. That was a topic of discussion.
Actually, all, if you're right, all of the tape back into the center, but alternative nineteen also ties back in at the, I think this is what, three miles, four miles maybe? This is the intermodal distribution center, which is one of the programs that we use talking to FHWA about regionalism and economic development, how the intermodal center could actually support the port of St. Joe. Okay?
I have one more question for Jason, if I can, just in terms of your timeline. I know you're looking for some direction or some input back from the commission. They had submitted that resolution a while back. In terms of your timeline, for them to, if they make a decision today or they have another public comment, meaning, what are you working against?
We're basically done with the study. FHWA is, at this point, it's a matter of moving the project forward now at this point. FHWA is basically waiting on us to do the, our meetings, you know, as far as meeting with Bay County and Gulf County. And then, at that point, I'm saying, we haven't met with Bay County yet. I'm saying probably sixty days is basically what we're kind of looking at.
All right. Thanks, sir. Mr. Butler, set us up. All the sunshine laws and everything's covered, unless maybe we need to have a joint meeting with our friends to the west of us, Bay County.
Jason, can we get a copy of that mail, Jason?
Yes, sir.
Wait, email it to us.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
While they're getting back, just a minute. Ms. Norris, owe you and your staff an apology. Did y'all have anything before the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have.
I apologize to you.
That's okay.
During the. Go ahead.
I have one announcement. My office is participating in what we are calling on this statewide basis as Operation Greenlight. This is a one-day opportunity for people who have been assessed fines, fees, and costs through the court system and have been turned over to the collection agency for non-payment of fines. We're offering them one day only to pay up and to avoid the forty percent collection surcharge that is assessed against them when we turn them over to collections. This will be, like I said, one-time-only event, April the eighteenth, that's a Saturday. It'll be from nine to four in the clerk's office. But it is, it's a thing that you, you know, you got this one opportunity, you have to pay all that you owe. Only thing that's gonna be waived is the forty percent surcharge that the collection agency has agreed to waive. We'll be putting out more information on that.
That's on Mr. Meters.
Felony, Mr. Meter, civil traffic, and civil violations.
Again, I apologize for not including you. Ms. Herring, you have anything or not? All right, at this time, we're going to go to Robin Trindell. Robin Trindell in the, yeah, there you are, with WCC. Good morning to you.
Good morning.
Going out here a little bit. You have the floor, go ahead.
Robin Trindell, Tallahassee. Karen Williams, Tallahassee.
And who's the young lady here?
I'm sorry, Karen Williams.
Karen Williams. Good morning, Karen.
So, I want to thank the commissioner and the chairman for this opportunity to speak today. As you know, Gulf County is a very important nesting beach for Florida sea turtles, particularly the loggerhead, the Panhandle loggerheads. And as the administrator for FWC's marine turtle management program, I'm very happy to have this opportunity to hopefully provide funds, make funds available for the county to enhance your programs for protection of the species. Gulf County has a very good program, very dedicated staff to try to minimize the effects of the beachfront properties on the nesting beach. So, I think you have a small packet that we prepared, you should have, I think, I was told. And I want to talk to you about a phase-two early restoration project that we developed and proposed that would offset some of the injuries that occurred to sea turtles during the response efforts during the early, during the deepwater horizon oil spill. And the impact that occurred at that time was actually related to the activities of the local government, such as Gulf County, to respond to either oil on their beach or to prepare in case you did get oil on your beach. And so, there is a photo, and I want to point out, one of the photos, did you get the packet? You didn't get it? Okay, I always told you it had it, sorry. So, there was a lot of lights and activity on the beach at night that interfered with sea turtle nesting. And in fact, the number of nests counted for the loggerhead during that period when the oil spill was going on was the lowest ever accounted during the whole history of reporting nests across the entire Panhandle. So, it was assumed that was associated with all that activity was going on. So, we proposed a phase-two project to offset that injury. And this was a project that went through the trustees' review and was approved and accepted by the trustees and BP. And the goal was, we called that project Restoring the Night Sky over Florida's conservation lands. And the goal was to obtain funds to address lighting that might impact sea turtles nesting on either county beaches or state beaches. So, the project was set up that funds were obtained to have a survey done across all the Panhandle conservation lands to identify lights both on the parks and then in a thousand-foot buffer around the parks. And that's been done, and we have a list of approximately five county parks that were included in the survey and one state park in Gulf County. And there were a total of five hundred and ninety-eight retrofits that were identified. And that means things that could be done to kind of block the lights that they could see from that piece of land that's in the conservation area. So, they actually stood in the middle of the conservation park and then identified all the lights surrounding it. So, now that we have that survey. Okay, thanks. We would like to work with the county to provide funds to enhance your efforts through your code, local lighting code, to help those property owners actually retrofit those lights or to provide tinting for windows to minimize the effect of indoor lighting on the sea turtle nesting beach. So, that's why we wanted to come and present this project to you today. If the funds are used, and it would be through a grant agreement directly to the county, it would require cost reimbursement. We've identified approximately ninety thousand dollars in funds that we could provide to the county for this. There is no match requirement if the funds are used to replace lights on the actual county land itself, but if the funds are used to help private property owners replace their lights or take other actions, there is a twenty-five percent match that is required. And that could be through in kind, or if it's a facility that has a property manager, their time can be used to offset that. Karen Williams is the contact manager for these grants, and so she can answer any questions you have about actually how that would be administered.
Sure. I have a question.
All right.
The funds that are available, are they also for installation or only for the replacement fixtures or fixtures that would alter the light?
Mostly, it's for bulbs and fixtures, and then also the labor that it would take for you all to either hire someone to go out and talk to the individuals of the conservation land. And we're hoping that the match might be from the property owner for twenty-five, just to, you know, install the bulb or the fixture.
Karen, hold just a moment.
Almost for extended time.
Go ahead, continue.
Okay. And then, my other question would be, let's say we're talking about one of the parks, and there are lights in the park that are coming into what you're asking us to change. So, if there's funds there to change the bulb or to put some type of a screen that would block the light from going towards the water, are there also funds to add additional low-level lighting if by changing that bulb it is a safety or security hazard in the park? Would you be able to add some additional lighting that was appropriate for turtles?
Yes, the goal of the project is both to meet public safety and to minimize the impacts of the lighting. So, public safety is a concern.
Okay.
And it would certainly be considered.
Okay. And then, I guess, my next question, I guess, would be to our attorney and what the legal stand is on this and going forward.
Commissioner, respectfully, it's the first time I'm hearing it, so I'd like the opportunity at least to talk to Katrina and understand the program, the grant, the funding, the obligations of both the county, the obligations of private landowners, and I'd probably feel much more comfortable commenting to the commission on concerns I may have.
Okay, and I can completely understand that. So, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we allow Mr. Novak to work with Ms. Saunders to look at the program and consider going forward.
Saunders, did you say?
I'm sorry, Ms. Trindell.
There you go, okay.
I was on the wrong item. Ms. Trindell.
No problem.
And then, my glasses on.
All right, all right, we all, okay. We have a.
And Ms. Williams.
There you go. The motion, we have a second. Attorney to, second by Commissioner, we mean any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Not in opposition, motion passed, four and oh. Thank you, ladies. All right. All right, Joe, if you ask to come back, then I'm going to the public after Mr. Danford.
I just got a response to my email, and so I wanted to get the board's approval on this. In our small county grant, we had the purchase of a flatbed truck. We had requested some modifications to the standard Florida sheriff's contract in that we wanted dual cylinders. We wouldn't know until the truck was in and was getting ready to be worked on what that additional cost would be. That additional cost comes to two thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, and I'd like to pay for that out of Public Works funds.
Let me say this, you need the dual cylinders, because if you're not level, that truck leaning the least bit, when it goes up, there goes your body. You'll spend a lot more than two thousand six hundred dollars in repairs.
Yes, sir.
All right, motion by Commissioner, back to the board. I hear a second for this. Thank you. Second, any further discussion on the audience? No opposition, motion passed, four and oh. Seating with the dual cylinders.
Yes, sir. One item on the Gulf to Walmart roadway, it still runs through Tyndale, and if there's a storm and Tyndale needs to get its convoys out, they'll pull deuce and a halfs across the road, and nobody will go anywhere.
Thank you. Now, this time, we're going to public discussion. Down the lengthy meeting here, maybe we can write, Ms. Lindis, is it, Sir Tech, am I correct there? You here? Yes, young lady, come on up, please. This is in reference to the RV ordinance.
Yes.
All right, you have the floor.
Okay, it's Lindis, eight inch, ninety twenty-five olive. Did you pass a resolution that Oak Grove and Highland View are exempt on March tenth?
Let me, I think there's been some misconceptions and maybe.
It wasn't the paper that you did.
Well, just a minute. Let me direct you over here to our county attorney, and I think he can, I don't explain you, but any other concerns with the audience. Mr. Attorney, can you turn some light here from, from Sir Tich?
From Mr. Sertich and anybody in the public, the county commission adopted an ordinance. Following that ordinance adoption and the map, at two different meetings, you provided direction to go back and introduce an amended map consistent with the EEP's coastal construction line. And so, that amendment is being written, it's being advertised, and then on April fourteenth and April twenty-eighth, there'll be public hearings in which the public can come and comment on that map that we showed at the last meeting. But nothing's been amended or ratified.
Okay.
And this is a copy of, you all come to it, and I have a couple more for anybody else that wants to take one today.
Okay.
But during April, you'll have that opportunity.
Okay. There's a lot of questions there. Then, my other concern with the RV ordinance, as I said, you want us to have a permit, and I've been through all the courthouse in this building, and I can't find that permit. And I lose my grandfather-in-class the way the ordinance is written without that permit. So, can that be addressed in April?
I can.
Sure.
The ordinance also speaks to implementing the ordinance and this new policy, or the new laws in Gulf County. And during this implementation period, one of the things the county commission is gonna do is if they do amend this ordinance, once they amend it, then we'll have to follow through on the implementation, just like we did on some other recent ordinances. But right now, in terms of a permit, until they amend the map or don't amend the map, they can't conclude their implementation. So, if you search the courthouse, there's no reason to search for it right now under the ordinance. At the very end, you'll see where there's a period of time the county administration has the ability to put this in place, if you will. A lot of administrative functions they need to perform. But after those April meetings, the county staff will have a clear picture on how to implement that ordinance.
Okay, so.
She don't even look.
Twenty-eighth of April.
Yep.
Be the final. All right, thank you, thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience? Commissioner, come up. City Commissioner Patterson. What's your name, you, city commissioner?
Good morning, Mr. Patterson, city commissioner. I just wanted to make a statement about the Gulf Coast pathway. There's no way we can support the two they're mentioning today. It doesn't benefit Gulf County at all. You know, we're trying to develop a port, and we need a way to get stuff out of here. So, we need to strongly fight for another route besides what they're telling us, you know. Panama City's already got plenty of roads to get in and out of there for their stuff. So, I would urge you to please, let's be firm, that those two routes are not what Gulf County needs. The other thing I just wanted to mention is the road bond we've been talking about. The city had a. The city had a workshop on it and consensus of a few of the commissioners, or 21%, maybe not enough. They're saying the city represents about 27% of Gulf County, and the money we'll get for the 21% will not even cover long avenues being paved. And that's the main issue we have is long avenue. But I suggest that we strongly, and Mr. Butler, I don't know if you've had conversations with our guy about getting a workshop between the city and the county, but I urge that we definitely need to get together, get face to face, and try to decide, you know, what can we do? What is the best for both of us? Because that's what I want, what's best for everybody.
Let me make a comment?
Sure, sure.
I'm gonna urge you, get with you two county commissioners, if we can step out there.
Yeah, we discussed that. But I think we are.
We may agree.
We're all coming together, maybe. But the two that you're talking about, I agree with you, and we have discussed that.
Well, Commissioner, it's been, what, nearly a year since we sat down?
Yeah, it's time.
Been a while, so we need to break bread.
We need to work together all we can for the benefit of all the people, this city and county. And that's all I have.
All right, thanks, sir. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else in the audience? I hear a motion, I'll accept the motion for adjournment. Motion, second?